UbaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
So we will move on. Oh, I also understand we are having some trouble with the livestream, but Zoom is working fine. So just a heads up to anyone who's trying to access via the livestream. So we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor House, please rise and remove your hats.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor House.
Here.
Supervisor Fur.
Yeah.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you. Next up is Consent Agenda. All items listed on our consent agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion. I've had a request to pull two items from the consent agenda and discuss center or county departments. Those items are 499 and 535. Is there a, any comment or request to pull additional items from board members? Okay, seeing none. Any public comment on the consent agenda minus 499 and 535? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
So moved with changes.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, with the exception of 490. I'll be no on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Four, one.
Next, we will move on to special presentations. We'll start off with item 518, 2025. Present proclamation to Senior Airman Damathi Bowman for his service with the Ninth Security Forces Squadron at BL Air Force Base, and I believe you'll be presenting that Supervisor Vasquez.
Order supervisor proclamation honoring Senior Airman Damathi Bowman, whereas Senior Airman Damathi Bowman is currently serving the Ninth Security Forces Squadron at BL Air Force Base, and whereas Senior Airman Bowman has dedicated more than 350 volunteer hours to the UbaSutter community over the last two years, and notable efforts include, Airman Bowman chaired the installation-wide ceremony honoring seven prisoners of war, the National POW MIA Missing in Action Recognition Day at the BL Air Force Base coordinating 340 volunteers, 24-hour virtual run, digital run, and two T-38 flyovers raising $5,000 to support the association. And whereas Senior Airman Bowman participated in the UbaSutter Stand Down, both 24 and 25, coordinating community volunteers and air force personnel raising over $20,000 in immediate support of veterans and their families. Whereas Airman Bowman took part in the Standing Tall for Veterans Benefit Dinner, 24-25 assisted in planning and logistics contributing to the fundraising total of more than $48,000 for local veterans programs. And whereas Airman Bowman was elected trustee number one for the Air Force Sergeants Association, Chapter 1372, overseeing three major portfolios, the legislative activities, retiree and veterans affairs, and family and spousal programs. And whereas Airman Damathi was recently awarded the Military Outstanding Volunteer Service Medal, a Department of Defense Declaration established by executive order 12830, recognizing sustained consequential volunteer service to the civilian community beyond the eyes of Senior Airman Bowman for his achievements, and extends deepest appreciation for his volunteer efforts which have directly benefited our local veterans and families.
First, I just want to say thank you, guys. Thank you to the board for even recognizing me. You know, hopefully I set a foundation for people from my base to also get recognized because we do a whole lot, and you guys do a whole lot for our installation as well. I just want to say thank you, guys. Stay blessed and stay warm because it's cold outside. Stay safe, you guys. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from board members?
Through the chair. I just want to say thank you for your outstanding community service. It's a lot. You already gave your life to the country, and now you're giving to the local community, so we just greatly appreciate that.
Oh, I will just echo those comments from Renick. I think he speaks for all of us, so really, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Through the chair. You can join the VFW if you want to. American Legion. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to item 511, 2025. Receive from Prism the Eagle Award for Active Shooter Training and Drill. So I'm not sure who's Prism. Awesome. Good morning.
Good morning. Order supervisors, thank you very much for the time on the agenda. If I could very quickly as well, thank you for your service. Thank you very much. We can never say that too often. My name is Rick Brush. I'm the Chief Member Services Officer at Prism. I'm joined today by Tony Corona, who is the manager of our Member Services Department. We're very, very pleased to be here today to award County of Yuba with this Eagle Award. What I first want to do is tell you a little bit about Prism and our membership, because that will truly illustrate what a big deal this is. At Prism, we're a public agency. We're a JPA, so we're a public agency just like you are. My email extension is .gov. We are you. We are made up of a membership. We have 54 of the 58 counties that are members of Prism. We have about 70% of the school districts, about 10%, or I'm sorry, 70% of the cities, about 10% of the school districts in the state. All in all, we have, we have probably little over 1,700 public entity members of Prism. And the reason I want to point that out is you are one of five award recipients in the entire membership, so it's a big deal. Our size matters at Prism. When we have all of these members, our economies of scale is a big thing. We have about $2.7 billion in contributions from all of our members. And the reason that scale matters is because we go all throughout the world shopping for reinsurance to bring those best policies of coverage and prices back to you, so that you have the best coverage at the best price. The other thing we're able to do with those economies of scale is when we bring you master service agreements. You know that you're not going out for an RFP on your own representing only Uba County, but we're going out on behalf of all of those public agencies, making sure that we get, again, the best coverage, the best service, at the best price for our members. So we have over 40 master service agreements that your staff is able to take advantage of in the areas of risk control, risk management, claim services, things such as that. So Prism is very different from insurance companies. We are not in business to build an ivory tower. We aren't down in the middle of San Francisco putting up a 45-story building. What we are doing is trying to build surplus for the benefit of all of our members. We're here to help our members. And let me quickly illustrate what I mean by that. When the Eaton fires happened last January down in the Los Angeles area, one of our members, Pasadena Unified School District, had a $410 million loss for their school districts. FEMA is going to take a long time to pay them that money, but what we did is immediately cut them a check for $15 million so that they could start bringing in buses and getting the kids go to other districts, so that they could have that continuity of service to their constituents. That's what we do. All day, every day, we find ways to help our members. We want to provide coverage. We don't want to exclude coverage. That's one of the things that makes us different in terms of being a member of organization. But let's talk about Uba County for a minute. So Uba County, you joined Prism back in 1981, when 20 other counties were members of Prism, then CSAC EIA, you might recognize that name from the past. And at CSAC EIA, we built many, many programs. We have over 29 programs, and Uba County currently participates in 15 of those programs, such as workers' compensation, general liability, property insurance, crime, medical malpractice, airport cyber. I could go on and on, but it's been a great partnership between Prism and Uba County for quite some time. I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to let Tony talk about specifically the Eagle Award that we're presenting to you today.
Thanks, Rick. So as Rick pointed out, we are you, and we are a public entity. We are also member-driven, and we have 62 members, and 54 of them are counties. And I want to pause for one second before we dive into the Eagle Award and give some recognition and thanks to Tiffany Manuel, who serves on our board, along with Karen Fassler, who is our board alternate, and Karen also serves on our Employee Benefits Committee. And that, again, we appreciate them showing up and helping and being a part of our governance. So for those of you who aren't familiar with the Eagle Award, Eagle stands for Exemplary Achievement in Government Leadership and Enrichment. The award is a way that Prism recognizes our members, their ideas, their programs, best practices, and their innovative achievements. This year, we had 12 applicants with only five winning programs, and Uba County was one of them. That's so exciting, you guys. We are happy, and I am really excited, to present an Eagle Award to the County of Yuba for their Active Shooter Training Drill Program. This was recognized in the category of Excellence in Overcoming Adversity. And I want to share with you all, oop, do I need to step away? I want to, yes, I do need to step away. I want to share with you all just a little bit about this program before I present the award. The risk of a workplace active shooter incidences within local government settings in California is an increasing concern that mirrors a broader national trend. Potential consequences are severe, and the threat is recognized as both credible and evolving, particularly due to the public-facing responsibilities of our local government employees. The passage of Senate Bill 553 in July 2024 required all employers to develop and implement the written Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. Your staff responded with an award-worthy plan. I would like to recognize some of the people that were involved with this. From your Human Resources Department, Tiffany Manuel and Salvador Martinez. From your Sheriff's Department, Sergeant Miles Lewis. Administrative Services was Premender Baines. And from your County Administrator, Kevin Mallon. The development and execution of Uba County's Active Shooter Training and Drill Program represents a significant advancement in workplace safety, in inter-agency coordination, and emergency preparedness. This solution addresses credible and evolving risks by equipping your employees with the knowledge, awareness, and practical experience needed to respond effectively during a violent critical incident. I have to tell you, so many of our members and the committees that reviewed all these were blown away by the practicalness. It wasn't just a paper for your employees to read, but you actually went through a drill, and that is so important and invaluable. The program developed by Uba County will be shared with all of our members as a best practice for their agencies to emulate. Therefore, please join me in congratulating Tiffany Manuel and El Salvador Martinez with the Eagle Award. With the board's permission, we'd like to take a picture of that gentleman.
I want to pause and just make sure, are there any questions or anything that we could answer for you?
Through the chair. I'd like to ask you to explain why it's important that law enforcement be trained on many aspects of their duties, and especially an active shooter.
Absolutely. We unfortunately see incidents far too often as a part of a pool that is this large with 1,700 public agencies, and it's critical that we do training. It's the workplace violence programs that are put in place. It's the preparedness that we do. Prism, we also do work with Post. We do de-escalation training. We've trained over 2,700 officers over the course of the last three years on de-escalation training. So when we get into these critical incidents, it's imperative that everybody knows ahead of time what it is that they need to do, how it is that they need to act, because unfortunately, you can be put into a position when, if you're reacting spontaneously, things don't go in the right direction. So the preparedness of putting together these workplace violence programs, if there's a First Amendment issue, and if someone comes in here, everybody has to be ready and know their role and know what to do. So it really flows all the way to the basics of risk management, and the basics of risk management are understanding what risks are available, knowing who does what when, and then how is it that we can be prepared to do those things. It's not just the coverage programs we put together. We don't want to pay claims, right? If we can do anything we could possibly do to eliminate these claims, that's what we need to do. That's why you put in risk control efforts. That's why people like Sal and Tiffany work all day long to say, okay, we're going to put coverages in place to make sure we can cover the things that unfortunately do happen, but what can we do to make it so that they don't? I hope that answers the question.
Well, through the chair, you can cover a lot, but you can't cover everything.
You can't. You're right.
You know, that's the problem. And there's a misnoir out there, bulletproof vests. There's no such thing.
You're absolutely right. Things are going to happen, so we got to do everything we can to be prepared and try and make it so that everything always works out safe, but unfortunately, bad things happen. That's why we have insurance. That's why we have coverage. Thank you very much for the question. I appreciate that. Any additional board comment or question?
No, just through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. Thank you. And I want to thank our staff who was involved in this, all the departments and all the individuals. So, you know, five awards out of, I forget the number, but it was, it was a very large number.
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred. So, yeah, so that's wonderful. So congratulations to Uba County and our team. So, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
Okay, next up is item 549. Receive presentation from Habitat for Humanity UbaSutter regarding the Jimmy and Rosalynn Carter Rural Rally Work Project. Good morning.
You're that fast through time.
I know.
Good morning, Chair Bradford and members of board. There's a presentation that should be populating. So while she's getting that ready, and the presentation pops up, I'm going to let you know that I'm not, this presentation is really just to put it on your radar, let you know about something incredible that's happening in the community. We're not requesting any funding. We're just inviting you to come celebrate with us, to work alongside us, and I am going to ask if we can get a formal resolution to support the project that I'm going to be detailing with you today. Thank you. All right. All right. So, and my name is Camille Benner. I'm the Director of Family Services at Habitat for Humanity UbaSutter. And so what we're here to talk about today is very exciting, as I said. And we're talking about the Rural Rally Work Project. But before I get into the details of what that is, I want to give you a little history on how it came to be, as this is the first annual Rural Rally Work Project that Habitat International is doing within our nation. So you may have heard of the Carter Work Project. It is the crowning jewel for Habitat for Humanities. This is an event that is by invite only. So Habitat International will reach out to Habitat affiliates that are meeting their mission within the communities they serve, and you get the opportunity to apply for a Carter Work Project. And this is a really big deal for the communities that are selected, because you're bringing in thousands of volunteers from all over the world, a lot of corporate sponsorships. It requires strong political will and partnership with your local jurisdictions, as we have with you, because we were applying for the Fernwood Meadows Development that we are doing in partnership with Uba County, and we appreciated your support on our Carter Work Project. However, it was selected to Austin, Texas, which isn't bad news. It's great news for them, and the Rural Rally is exciting news for us, because what this is, is a smaller version of the Carter Work Project, and it will be taking place right here in Uba County in the city of Marysville, October 26 through October 30 of this month, just a few days away. So what the Rural Rally Work Project is, is essentially a smaller offshoot where Habitat affiliates can participate. We're going to be running alongside. We'll have the national media of Habitat International really showcasing all the different affiliates, and the goal is to put a spotlight on the rural communities that are often overlooked and underserved, and the need for affordable housing and home repairs. So our project will be taking place on Pine Street. I double-clicked. That's okay. You don't need to see that picture. So we had a home come back into our housing stock, 426 Pine Street. And what, this is going to be the centerpiece of our Rural Rally Work Project. We are going to be rehabbing 426 Pine Street with volunteer support. This is really, really exciting, since pre-COVID, we have not had volunteers on the build site, and we are really excited to bring back that traditional Habitat model. So this is the view from Fifth and Pine. It's right across the street from the Teriyaki House. Currently, the estimated entire project cost, if we didn't have in-kind donations, for instance, Whirlpool just donated a washer and, I'm sorry, not a washer, a refrigerator and oven for every single home on Pine and Fourth Street, which is incredible. IKEA just offered free cabinets for the home at 426 Pine Street that we will be rehabbing. That rehab will become affordable homeownership for a local veteran or someone with lived experience of homelessness that has proven that they can sustain affordable rental housing. And in addition to that, we are brushing the entire street with kindness. So everybody on Pine Street, we're offering free landscaping, free exterior paint, debris removal. Saylove is going to partner with us the day before the event. They don't typically do public, but they're going to go down the street and help us just remove debris and garbage. On Sunday, the 26th, which I invite all of you to come, will be the kickoff event, and that's where we'll be hearing from some local community members that we've been able to serve. A few of them are actually Uba County residents that were able to be served, thanks in part to the Uba County CDBG OOR program. And we'll just be able to see the street and talk about what's going to be happening. And then on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're going to have volunteers showing up every day, helping us support this project and support the people on the street. Again, this is no cost to anyone. And then on Thursday at noon, we will be celebrating a closing ceremony, which is going to be a lot of fun. Just going to be able to see from the beginning to end how much work we really did, what our community can do, and what happens when volunteers rally together. So we're raising community morale, property values, all across the board. It's going to be, I am so, so pumped for this event. Our entire team is. We're looking forward to working with volunteers and Bowman, Airman Bowman. I will be sending you some information. I would love to see you and your team out there volunteering, if you're able. That would be, and for anybody listening, we are, we are looking for sponsors to help support this event. Again, this is a completely community-driven event. There are no grant dollars attached to this, so everything we do is going to be as a community, and we are looking for sponsorships and volunteers. If anybody would like to volunteer, we are requesting that they try to commit to raise, I'm just talking through these slides, and I apologize for that. So we're going to be asking them to raise $500. It's okay if they do not raise $500. We're not going to kick them off the site. We still want them there, but we certainly want them to try. It's going to help get the messaging out there, reach to their networks, their friends and family, and have them support to offset costs for safety gear, food, and everything else that will be happening. November 1st, we will be opening applications. We are also looking for a Family Services Committee. It'll be a one-time committee, so anybody listening, if you would like to help be a selection for the family that will be moving into Pine Street, we encourage you to reach out. Applications will open November 1st through the 15th. The goal is that someone will be moving into their home just in time for the holidays. That is the goal. It may be just after the holidays as the scope of work changes. So this is a view from the entry door, looking into Pine Street. As you see, lots and lots of work is required. We basically had to gut this entire house, and I want to really just highlight why this is, uh-oh, how do we? Apologize. I want to highlight why this is really important. It's important beyond just serving the community. I'm going to get to this last slide here. And it's about getting the community involved. It's also about, we really want to bolster our Carter Work Project application to Habitat International, so that they can see that we have political will, we have the volunteers, we have the community, and we want to bring something that incredible to the UbaSutter area, because we believe that that is going to benefit everyone with the economic boost. As I said, you have volunteers that fly in from all over the world that are willing to pay big bucks just to say they were a part, and a lot of corporate sponsorships that are going to help fill those funding gaps on Fernwood, and we build 22 homes in a week period, which is incredible, and again, requires nothing but all of your support, and we thank you for that. So that's a really big deal, but mostly it's just about getting back on the volunteer side with our community, raising funds, doing things the old-fashioned way with Habitat, and highlighting the UbaSutter area. I do want to just end this and challenge you. When I presented to the city of Marysville, Mary Chris Branscombe did sponsor the very first volunteer, so no pressure. No, but are there any questions? So our ask is just that you come and participate with us, and if you can volunteer, that would be great, but we would love to have, I know it's Renick's district or Supervisor House's district, so if he's available to speak, not, but of course, any... um, if he's available to speak now, but of course, any, any of you, we would love to have you there with us.
Thank you, Kami, for presenting this and making it a big deal for our community. Um, this is the area that's kind of right across the street from High House Sushi. And it's a really, it's an area that needs revitalized. We're trying to push that as a, as a commercial corridor and a new restaurant, new barbecue restaurant going in down the street. And, uh, just hate to leave that neighborhood behind. So, um, thank you for pushing that forward.
The really great, um, news, sorry, is that, um, this is already identified by the city of Marysville as an area that they want to revitalize. So, um, council member Stuart Gilchrist has already started creating some, um, design plans for how he envisions the street. They've already, um, limited it to their historic color palette. And so this is something that we're going to be able to help save the city cost and jumpstart something they're already going to be, um, wanting to do. And we do have the city of Marysville on board. They'll be closing the street down for us for the event. Um, and their Works Department is going to come in and help support with the tree trimming, which is incredible because that was, um, a, a pretty big cost when we went out to bid. So we're incredibly grateful for the city's partnership.
I just had one more question. Is Recology partnering on this at all? Or?
Not yet, but we, we're, we're putting emails out there.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll bring my truck and my gooseneck, uh, so we can load material out. So hopefully we can get some dump, uh, fees waived. So.
I like that. Thank you. That would be incredible. Thank you. What day?
Sunday, when you're cleaning, when you're cleaning, you're doing a pre-clean-up Sunday, right?
So the pre-clean-up is Saturday. We're going to be in part, um, that'll be Saylove's typical Saylove Saturday. And then, um, they'll be all over the community, as you know, um, but one of the locations will be Pine Street. And then lunch will be in the Habitat parking lot.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Additional comments from, from board members? Okay, I, I would just thank you for coming, Kami. This is really, really exciting.
It is really exciting.
Can you send us the details about timing on the 26th and the 30th about the opening and closing so that if we're available, uh, those of us who are available can make sure and attend? And then in addition to that, with, with the, uh, consensus of the board, I would request that at our next meeting, we, uh, we consider the requested proclamation. Is that consensus of the board?
Yeah.
Support. Okay.
Through the chair. Um, could we also have them, uh, could you draft some stuff for us for the resolutions that, so we can hit all the?
But ready.
Okay. We want to hit all the points that you need to gain points on future applications. So.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Perfect. Get it to the clerk of the board and, uh, and we'll formally consider it at our next meeting.
Absolutely. So, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Excellent. So next up is item 522. Receive quarterly update from Community Development and Services. Good morning, Ashley.
Here we are. Good morning. Good morning, Chair Bradford and members of the board. My name is Ashley Potocznik. I'm the Business Engagement Manager with CDSA. You've seen me here a couple of times every three months. Um, and today I'm here to present the quarterly update from July through September of this year. As always, before diving into our project-specific updates, I'm just going to frame this in our economic development framework that we have. These five pillars are where we really frame all of the economic development work that we do in Yuba County. And today we're going to be specifically looking at attraction and marketing. The attraction and marketing pillar, and I'll be discussing these three main elements in that, um, attraction and marketing sector. So we'll be looking at a retail and commercial update, looking at our engagement with the International Council of Shopping Centers, which is ICSC, as well as our partnership with Capital Rivers Commercial, and then providing an overview of the shopping centers that are in development across the county. So first, the International Council of Shopping Centers, our team recently attended. And this is a large trade show where retailers from across the nation come together and meet with commercial brokers, jurisdictions, and, quote, "make deals" of, um, retailers to come to new markets. So we attended and, um, engaged with 30-plus retailers and developers. We distributed our commercial opportunities packet that you can see here on the slide, which really highlights our Yuba County advantage and why these retailers should be coming here, as well as the commercial shopping centers that we have, um, under development. Some of the key takeaways that we learned was the, the interest now or the kind of pain, not really change, but a lot of these retailers are transitioning to a franchise model. And so what that really means for us is figuring out how to work with our existing business community. Maybe franchises that exist here that are looking to expand their portfolio, um, or other, other avenues to really bring those retailers here through a local franchisee. And the relationships that we made there really helped us to build long-term momentum. Um, and also we spoke with developers, not just retailers. So it's having that kind of both sides of the, of the story. Because we did hear a lot, these retailers are looking for second-generation space, which means existing buildings. And in Yuba County, as you know, we have a lot of land. And so talking to those developers and helping to, to close that gap was a, a big part of a takeaway for us. In addition, we have partnered with Capital Rivers Commercial. So they are a team of commercial brokers as well as retail recruitment specialists, um, as well as developers. And so they've provided us with a lot of, a lot of great resources. One that I have here on the screen, this is a portal that helps us access data as well as pull specific reports that we can share with retailers to tell the story of, this is why your retail business fits in our market as opposed to another market. In addition, partnering with Capital Rivers and with Team California, um, help us to have representation at trade shows such as ICSC that we may not be able to attend. So an update on some of the shopping centers that are under development. A lot of this you're probably aware of because we drive past these every day and see the exciting updates. But in the Feather River Shopping Center, the Chipotle project is really coming along quickly. So we're excited about that. Um, and there is also a grading permit in review for this space between Costco and Foodmax. So that permit is in review and it's, it's essentially going to do the site work to prepare for buildable pads. Why, today I'm kind of out of breath. So I'm sorry about that. Um, the next one that I'll highlight is Northfield Commons. So this is where Panda Express and Surf Through will be located. The permits have been issued for both of those businesses. And the existing two pads that you'll see here in green are actively listed for sale. The last one I'll highlight is our River Oak Shopping Center in Plumas Lake. The Holiday Market Project is well underway. They're doing the site work now. Um, and we also have in design review, the McDonald's Drive-Thru that's shown here on the map, um, that will be, will be planned there. Next, I'm going to see if this video will work while I'm talking. So we have some really exciting customer survey updates happening in CDSA. The first is our Building Permits 101 video. And this can provide, um, really the how-to for individuals of how to get a permit, how to apply on the portal, how to pay your fees, what needs a permit and what doesn't. In addition, we're advancing major technology improvements that will be coming soon, which is the Environmental Health Integration with Tyler, which is basically our online software, as well as finance rolling out Tyler Payments, which will make online payments more streamlined. So these improvements in streamlining permitting increase transparency and strengthen customer service across the department. And our ongoing commitment to improving the development experience plays a vital role in supporting retail expansion across the county. The efficiency and effectiveness of these processes are closely tied to the county's sales tax revenue, underscoring their importance to our broader economic health. The rest of that video, I'm happy to share it with you. I know we didn't get to watch the whole thing. So now on to in Public Works. Our Public Works team continues to work very hard on a lot of capital improvement projects. The one that I'll really highlight here is the Los Verheles Bridge Replacement Project that you can see in these pictures, um, that was recently completed. And looking ahead, there's construction planned for Northfield Road Complete Streets, Phase 3, Feather River Boulevard, and the countywide signal system upgrade. In planning, there were several new home-based businesses approved this quarter. That's an ongoing trend we're seeing, which really shows the entrepreneurial spirit here in Yuba County. That folks are really, really getting after it when it comes to building their, building their businesses. We also recorded a record number of new subdivision maps in this quarter. So that's exciting. Seven new subdivision maps, um, from July to September. As you know, we also track building permits each quarter. This year is shown in blue. So this is showing across the last four years, the total number of building permits each quarter. This quarter we were at 625, which is a slight dip compared to the prior quarter, but it reflects a more typical seasonal pattern that we've seen in past years as the pace of construction adjusts with the seasons. Overall, permit activity remains strong and in line with long-term averages. Back to some of our commercial updates. Uh, a lot of this we already talked about with the shopping centers that are under development. But one exciting one that I'll highlight here is we received a building permit application for Dutch Brothers in Linda. So this is at the old Peachtree, um, restaurant location. And that is currently in review with our building department. When we look at residential building permits, the activity has moderated this quarter with 75 final occupancies and a, a bit of a drop in new production home permits compared to earlier in the year. While this may look like a slowdown, it's important context that developers front-loaded a large portion of their 2025 production earlier in the year to meet the housing demand. What we're seeing now is more of a natural pace of permits rather than a decline in interest. The fact that nearly 450 production homes, which you can see right here, have already been issued year-to-date, which is more than two-thirds of last year's total. So this is just the first three quarters of this year. Shows that residential development is still moving forward strongly, just at a steadier rate in the second half of the year. This moderation also allows the market to absorb new housing supply at a sustainable pace, supporting long-term, um, sustainability. And this is something that on our economic development team and across CDSA will continue to look closely. As always, while I represent the economic development team, the projects shared are across the entire CDSA. From public works to planning, building, to environmental health, finance and beyond, it really takes the full team to deliver this level and this caliber of projects. So I just want to thank, thank the CDSA team for that. And this is really the yes-to-yuba mindset in action. So thank you very much. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Questions and comments from board members?
Through the chair. I just keep getting surprised every quarter that we can maintain that many houses coming in. And, and the, the happy part of me is, is bigger tax base so that we can pay for the things we need to pay without affecting our residents. But the, uh, to go along with that responsible growth, we also kicked off the, um, the Plumas Lakes specific plan and the, the 30-year plan for the county. So, or the general plan updates. So just a great quarter overall. And congratulations to your team for all the work you're doing and getting to see these projects through.
Through the chair. Every year we have, um, a report from the assessor about an increase in assessed valuation. And, uh, they just gave us a, uh, report for the last 17 years. We've doubled the assessed valuation of the entire county. We're up to $10 billion. That just might be an interesting fact to put in the, uh, in the presentation. So.
Yeah, that could be.
Thank you.
So Ashley, oh, great presentation, Ashley. So, uh, always look forward to, uh, your quarterly presentations from CDSA. And, uh, there's always amazing things in them. So thank you to you and the rest of the CDSA team for all you guys do every day to support what's going on in Yuba County. So, thank you. Okay, that is it for special presentations. Next, you will move on to public communications. Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, or raise your hand if you are on Zoom. Please note that no action can be taken on comments made under this heading. Is there anyone that would like to speak today on something that is not on the agenda? Do we have someone? Yes. Come on up, sir. Oh, sure. Is that, is the same individual?
First card we have Tony Farley.
For service. Thank you, Air, Sierra Man, Bob, Bowman, the, the State Forces Guarding for service for State Forces Squadron. Appreciate it. Thank you, County Minister, Chief Saxon. Thank you, County Council, McGeorge. Also, there's a George guy called Seth Fuller. He's a George graduate for taxes. And, and Greg Bradford is Sacramento, San, Sacramento, man. And, and Misk, the Misk. Miss guy, cowboy farmer. And Super, the house, Super, the house, the house. And I need baskets. VW, a reservist from the Sheriff Department and Marine Corps. Yeah, baskets. And the, uh, the, the Backwoods, the Backwoods Club, the, the Backwoods Club, um, um, Izzy, there's Izzy. And Dr. Lil, okay, Dr. Lil, the Sheriff Department, the Sierra Sacramento EMS Director, the, the, um, Rachel, Rachel, Rachel from Public Works, and the other sheriff, and the sheriff and the funny captain, and Sarah from OES, and Oscar from OES. Don't forget, cert team, we'll create a cert team, create a cert team. And also get Jennifer from HHS, Dr. Lil. Thank you for your service. Everybody.
Thank you, Tony. Come on up, sir.
Good morning. Um, a couple of quick updates on the ongoing non-compliance with the FAA grant assurances. It's come to my attention that your case was recently escalated to ACO 100. That is the FAA's compliance headquarters in Washington, DC. And they take over the more serious cases after an airport sponsor demonstrates that they are unwilling or incapable of voluntary compliance. Uh, they are also the ones who control the federal airport funding worth several hundred thousand dollars per year. And I'd like to remind you that earlier this year, the Regional Airport District Office explicitly threatened that funding in writing before escalating the case to ACO 100. So it's probably reasonable to assume that that funding is very much at risk. Uh, and the last time I was here, I offered to drop all complaints against the county. All you had to do was allow myself, a licensed pilot, to operate my ultralight, which is a federally protected aeronautical activity under Grant Assurance 22. Because the county declined my offer, I have filed earlier this morning a Chapter 16 complaint with the FAA. That raises the stakes and takes the control out of the county's hands and back into the FAA's. To understand how this is going to turn out, I would advise the supervisors to review a very similar case in which the county, um, Sacramento County tried to ban ultralights at the Franklin Airport. There was a Chapter 16 case. The county lost. Now, I'd expect that fighting this case will waste several tens of thousands of dollars and could lose hundreds of thousands of dollars if funding is affected. And I'm not sure why the county is so deeply entrenched in this non-compliance, but I do know that it has harmed local ultralight operators. It has displaced a local small business. And it has created now a tremendous liability for the taxpayers. So I'd like to repeat my request that you address the non-compliance publicly by adding this topic to a public meeting agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Or anyone on Zoom? Is he anyone on Zoom?
None through the chair.
Okay. So we will move on to county departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items, which will be considered and voted on separately. And we will start with item 499, which is Community Development and Services. Approve agreement, uh, whoops, sorry, not 499. All right, it is 499, but I'm reading the wrong one. Board of Supervisors, appoint to Reclamation District 784 David Reed, Joseph Danit, Sardi Batwall as trustees to a four-year term in lieu of election pursuant to the elections code. So.
Through the chair. I asked that this be pulled because I had a couple of questions and I saw Patrick Meeger's in the room. So I figured we could ask him. So my questions are, uh, this election that gets put on every four years, it, it's publicly notified to the general public through a newspaper article one day on a classified ad. I just wanted to see if that's all that's required before you put it, uh, before you appoint to the positions? Or if there's, is that the, is that what all the other water districts? water districts and reclamation districts, special districts do, just run at one time, one, one day? And then on top of that, I didn't see an ad in our uploaded documents. I just saw the letter. So I just want to make sure it was posted and published.
Good morning, Board of Directors. Patrick Marr, General Manager for Reclamation District seven eighty-four. Appreciate your question, Supervisor House. Yes, for the Reclamation District, we typically have to publish in the appeal, Democrat, the notice of filing petitions. And that has to be posted, published within a certain timeframe. And we do have record of that publication, and I can provide that if you'd like. But yes, that is a typical procedure for the election. If we don't receive any more filing petitions than the number of trustee positions available, then no election is required as per the Water Code.
Okay, and it just concerns me a little bit because I've had some constituents that have, that seem like they don't, they don't quite line up with the, the policies and the, the fees and things like that, and their residents of the county in that specific area. And I, and anytime I ask them, I say, well, why don't you think about running for that board? If you, you know, if you don't agree with it, and it seems to be a pretty good consensus. They have no idea that there's an election. They have no idea that it's been published. I, I mean, our county, when we run an election, we run it online. We give updates regularly of who's applied. I just think it could be done more public in the future. And, and ultimately, you should have more interest in your trustees than just the same three or six, three at a time that come in and out. It just, it's kind of a little concerning to me. So. But you answered my question, so I'm.
Through the chair.
Ready to move forward?
Sure, go ahead.
Through the chair, is there a resident? Do, do all these individuals reside within Reclamation District seven eighty-four?
They either reside in Reclamation District seven eighty-four or they own property.
Okay.
If, if I recall correctly, requirement to be a trustee in a reclamation district is, it's landowner-based. So if you own property within the district, then you're eligible. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There was second? I'll second. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to item five thirty-five, twenty twenty-five. Board of Supervisors, approve the appointment of the individuals listed to Agency on Aging Area Four Advisory Council as representatives to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Supervisor House.
Again, I asked for this one to be pulled. Questions I have. So both applicants reside in District four, and there's only two applicants. So I just think that we should, even though we've had the vacancies for a little while, we should try to get it split up. So it's not both Plumas Lake residents that are from out of the area, retirees. Maybe we get some people of the historic district, Marysville or a low-income area. I think it'd be important that we do that. So that's, that's why I asked to pull this and just, I do see they're both qualified because of the reasons they listed on their application. You have to be a person of a certain age, minority, or someone who received services through that commission. But I just think it's very important that we have, we don't have, especially the area of foreign aging. We need, we need our county well-represented as a whole, not just one area. So that's my request, is that we just would approve one and then promote the additional.
So I, I would just maybe suggest that, two things. Number one, I know there are certain appointments that we make that are per district, and there is good reason for that. Because I do agree that when we have representation from across the county, that serves our residents best. And then there are some that are, you know, there are no requirements to be from a certain part of the county. I don't know if the clerk of the board's office can tell the board how long these openings were around, but I, but I believe they've, they worked quite a while. Do you, do you happen to know, Ezzy, how long these were, these vacancies existed before we received applications? Okay.
Through the chair, if I could go ahead and respond to that question?
Thank you, Mary.
These vacancies have been out there for, I believe, a year already. And what we do with the applications received is we go ahead and we send them to Area Four Agency on Aging. And what they do is they go ahead and take it to their governing board. And it's a governing board is the one that actually appoints them. And so then they send them to us to go ahead and go for appointment. And you're correct, they don't have to be district-specific. So it's up to the governing board to go ahead and authorize these applications.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Additional board comment or question?
Yeah, through the chair, just one more. So we're also looking at what services Area Four on Aging provide for us, and if they're the right fit for our county. And we've had meetings on that, and these, these applications came through right after those, that meeting. So I'm kind of, I, I don't want to, I don't want to set it up to where our voice is not that we want to review that relationship. I want to make sure we're well-represented on that board. So, so I still ask that we would just approve one and look for another.
My comment is, when I got on this board, there were several vacancies on that board. And I went out and recruited people from the hills and, and we got it filled. I think if I'm, maybe Mary can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was like one from each district and then a couple at large. And I think for about a year and a half or so, I got people that go in and six months later wanted to resign and get somebody else on, and somebody else had resigned. It's just been so tough to fill that board. I really think, Renick, if, if you went out and recruited, and I don't think you'd be successful recruiting anybody. We, we had some from, one from the city of Marysville. He lasted six months.
I think, I think that was the Commission on Aging. I think that's a different.
Oh, is it? Yeah, okay, maybe.
This, this, the, the two.
But do you have somebody in mind?
I, I do have people in mind. I've been filling the district, my district positions. But my just, that would be my request, that we kind of, seeing that we only have two seats available, it's not a district, or it's not a commission where we have five, you know, it just, it's very important.
And, and I will add this. If we do appoint both of these, you can't, we cannot change our mind later and say, hell, we want to take one off. It's out of our hands. So I guess I would, I would back you. If you think you have somebody else you could get on there, I would back you just appointing one now. We're postponing this for a month or two. Through the chair. You know, I'm in Area Four on Aging, and there's been some, some shenanigans going on there last year, cutting off meals on wheels. And I think that, I think that the, the vacancies have been there for a while. I think we should get somebody in there at least that knows, shows that Yuba County cares. And, and a lot of the governing members don't know, they didn't know that people were, had meals cut off last year. And I think that we need to have people there that can bring that to our attention. So I say we, we should go ahead and appoint these two. It's, it's a shame we can't, you know, get enough volunteers to fill the, fill the positions. And let's, let's take the ones we got.
Is there a motion?
They took the time out to, to fill out forms and, and express an interest. Oh, I have another question. How many people are on that Agency for on Aging Commission?
Through the chair, if I can, there is two appointments only.
No, I know, but how many are on the board? Well, we, we actually had a, a, probably getting a quorum last meeting, which was, I was at that meeting and last Friday. And if we'd have had one less, we'd have had this. So there's two, there's two from Yuba County?
If I may, are either Vivian or Uriko here today? No? All right, then I'll move that we table this till next meeting.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing, seeing none, all in favor of tabling till next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it sounds like motion passes. Supervisor House, I, I would request that, if you can, you have two weeks to get someone to submit an application. So at least we know there's interest from someone else.
And if we could let the two applicants know just to come to next meeting if they'd like to?
Sure, that'd be great. Can you take care of that, Ezzy? Thank you. Okay. So next, we will move on to the rest of county departments, starting with five thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Board of Supervisors recommend nomination of representatives and alternate to California State Association of Counties Board of Directors for the term of December first, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. So current representatives to the CSAC Board, the primary representative is Supervisor Messick. And I am the alternate, and I also serve as Chair of the Housing, Land, and Transportation Committee for CSAC. So I, I, I know Supervisor Messick is interested in remaining as the primaries. Is that correct, Supervisor?
Yes.
Okay.
I would love to see a change-up. So if I could, I would like to nominate Renick House. As the primary?
Through the chair, I'd like to nominate the, Yuri and John to represent us again.
Well, we, we, we have a nomination on the floor. So before we move on, I would, I would ask Supervisor House if that is of interest to him. And if so, then, then that we probably can take that under consideration.
Well, it's definitely of interest to me, but I'm supportive if you guys want to stay on it.
No, if, if you're interested in doing that, I think it'd be good for you to have, get your feet wet there in CSAC. So. I will support.
I, I, I may make a recommendation. I, I do not need to be primary or alternate. I just need to be able to attend the two conferences to serve as my role as the, the Chair of that committee. So if the board is in favor of it, I would certainly support either John R. Renick as the primary and the other as the alternate, so long as the board is supportive of budget for me to attend those two annual conferences to fulfill my role as Chair of the committee.
I think that's a good idea, and I'd like to be primary if I could. And John and I work together on a lot of these committees to make sure it's always manned.
Well, I, I think it might be best for budget-wise of the county if we leave Gary as the alternate, because he does have to go. He's a voting member of the JPLA or whatever it is. So let's go with you and Gary. That would be the best. Right, because you'll, if you can't make it, Gary can cover, and he has to go to CSAC Conference and, and the other one anyway. That would make more sense, I think, for the county. You need a motion for that? I think Seth already did the, Renick, you want to add Gary as the alternate?
I will amend.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Next step is item four seventy-nine, twenty twenty-five. Sheriff coroner, adopt resolution to approve and ratify agreement with Correctional Healthcare Partners for the provision of comprehensive medical and mental health services at the Yuba County Jail and further approve and ratify Amendment number one, assigning agreement to CHPY UBA Incorporated for a term of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty thirty-two. Morning.
Thank you, Chair Bradford, and members of the board, Brandon Spear, Yuba County Sheriff's Office Jail Commander. Yuba County is required to provide adequate medical and behavioral health services to those housed within our jail. Since 2017, these services have been provided by a qualified vendor in alignment with the county purchasing and contract policy manual. In January twenty-five, the county issued the RFP to identify and evaluate qualified providers. Four submittals were received, and part of that process, all were interviewed. At the end, from this RFP process, Correctional Healthcare Partners was identified as the most qualified based on their experience, ability to meet the service needs at the jail, and cost effectiveness. The county was able to negotiate for a stable two percent annual staffing cost increase over the seven-year term of the agreement resulting in significant cost savings to the county. Due to the timeline established by the previous vendor to discontinue providing services effective nine thirty twenty-five, the county entered into emergency contract with CHP effective ten one twenty-five. Following execution, CHP assigned all rights and obligations under the agreement to CHP UBA Inc., which was authorized by the purchasing agent through an amendment. For these reasons, we bring this resolution to the Board for ratification of the agreement and subsequent amendment. In addition to the mandatory medical and behavioral health services that were already being provided at the jail, the services to be provided by CHP UBA include an expansion on the Medication-Assisted Treatment Program, or MAP program, to include induction and onsite SAD counseling, alignment of all services with NCCHC standards, Title fifteen requirements, the Second Amendment Consent Decree, and the Calum Justice Involved Initiative. Coordinate and collaborative reentry or discharge planning to ensure successful transition back into the community and routine quality assessment improvement through ongoing monitoring, reporting, and engagement with the county to ensure services provided meet or exceed industry standards. So with that, we recommend the Board adopt the resolution and amendment for the seven-year term.
Questions or comments from board members?
Okay, seeing none, any public comment on this item? Okay.
Move through. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next, we'll move on to item five thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Emergency Services, receive report from Sierra Sacramento Valley Emergency Medical Services on the current Bay County ambulance, emergency ground ambulance, exclusive operating area agreement for Yuba County, and discussion regarding EOA agreement renewal. Morning.
How do I pull it up on that? I don't come here often. While she's pulling it up, good morning. For the record, my name's John Poland. I'm the Regional Executive Director of the Sierra Sacramento Valley EMS Agency, or your local EMS agency for Yuba County. Explain that a little bit more here in just a second. Perfect, so just. Alright, so again, I'll try to be brief. That good? Alright, so just a real brief history of who we are and why I'm here. So each county in the state of California, according to current statute, is required to have a local EMS agency. As you guys are fully aware, there's 58 counties in the state of California. There's only 34 local EMS agencies. 27 of those are single-county, and then the remainder are multiple-county EMS agencies such as ours. They cover the other 29 counties in the state of California. This is a little bit about our EMS agency. We have 10 counties that we're responsible for. We have all regulatory oversight requirements that a single-county EMS agency has. We just have those for the 10 counties that we serve, which includes Yuba County. Within our region, we have about 100 first-responder agencies, a little over 30 ground ambulance transport providers, six EMS aircraft providers, and 17, at the time I wrote this, 17 acute-care hospitals. It's now down to 16 with the loss of Glenn Medical Center that happened about a month ago. The LEMSA, the local EMS agency required by statute, is responsible for contracting for emergency ground ambulance services within the county or the counties that we serve. And on this slide is just a few legal references which clarified the responsibility for our agency to manage these contracts and to implement them and to maintain them and oversee them. Couple statutory references, California Health and Safety Code 1798.85 states the exclusive operating area means an EMS area or subarea defined by the Emergency Medical Services Plan for which a local EMS agency, upon the recommendation of a county, restricts operations to one or more emergency ambulance services or providers of limited advanced life support or advanced life support. One more statutory reference for you is California Health and Safety Code 1798.224 establishes that a local EMS agency may create one or more exclusive operating areas in the development of a local plan if a competitive process is utilized to select the provider or providers of the services pursuant to this plan. That section of statute further states that no competitive process is required if the local EMS agency develops or implements a local plan that continues the use of existing providers operating within a local EMS area in the manner and scope in which the services have been provided without interruption since January 1st of 1981. Just a quick timeline of emergency ambulance services here in Yuba County. Our agency as a JPA was formed in 1975. Yuba County was one of our founding member counties. In 1976, By-County Ambulance, your current provider of emergency ground ambulance services within the county, began providing emergency ambulances within the county. So obviously, they predate that 1981 requirement that I just referenced. In 2003, the Board of Supervisors for Yuba County at the time recommended that our agency, based upon the current statute, establish an exclusive operating area agreement with By-County Ambulance, and that operating area agreement was subsequently established and implemented in 2005 for the first time. It was, it included renewal provision, so usually exclusive operating area agreements for emergency ambulances routinely are about five years in length, and they usually contain some type of renewal clause in them as well. As you can imagine, providing emergency ground ambulance services is very expensive. Single ambulance is about $250,000 to $300,000. Cardiac monitor is about $50,000. It's very expensive. So you, the provider needs some confidence that they're going to recoup their investment in services and, and equipment. In 2018, we executed a revised EOA agreement with By-County Ambulance. And again, at that time, that was upon recommendation and direction by the Yuba County Board of Supervisors. And then most recently, in 2024, we executed a more short-term, three-year modified EOA agreement with By-County Ambulance, and I'll explain a little bit more here in a second on why that agreement was a little bit shortened and modified. And then, so that current agreement that we currently have in place with By-County Ambulance expires on December 31st of 2026. A little bit about the three-year shortened term, it was shortened due to probably no surprise to this board, By-County Ambulance, just like a lot of our EMS providers, had some significant struggles with the COVID pandemic. At one point, their full-time paramedic staffing dropped to about 12 or 13, which is obviously less than ideal for the services that they provide. Currently, as we sit here today, By-County Ambulance maintains 25 full-time paramedics and 15 part-time paramedics to supplement the services that they provide. At the time we negotiated and implemented this last EOA agreement back in 2024, By-County was just starting to recover from staffing and other operational issues from the COVID pandemic. So talking to the county administration, Board of Supervisors at that time, it was determined that we wanted to do a shorter-term contract just to ensure that the recovery for By-County Ambulance was sustained and adequate in order to continue to provide services, emergency ambulance services, to Yuba County. As of the implementation of that contract, which is now about two years in, By-County Ambulance has been completely compliant, 100%, with all current exclusive operating agreement terms that we negotiated and implemented with the most recent EOA agreement. Some system improvements and sustainability specific to By-County Ambulance in their current agreement. Their EMS personnel wages and benefits are at above the industry standard. That includes sign-on and retention bonuses, which have been helpful in obtaining additional paramedic and EMT staffing for this area. By-County Ambulance also sponsors local EMTs to obtain paramedic training and licensure. That's about a one-year process from once they become an EMT to become a paramedic, so it can be expensive and obviously takes a lot of time for individuals to go through that additional training. As I just mentioned, they have sustained an increase in paramedic staffing, more than doubling their minimum staffing that they saw during the COVID pandemic. And again, that has been sustainable for the two-year term that they've completed so far of the agreement. They've been completely compliant with the minimum ALS ambulance deployment requirements that we implemented into their contract, and for 2025, year-to-date, has actually had a 45% monthly average exceedance of the minimum deployment of ALS unit hours within both Yuba and Sutter Counties. They've implemented several additional clinical quality improvement processes and tools to ensure patients receive the best possible pre-hospital EMS care. And those tools also help them identify and intervene rapidly when, obviously, when these expectations are not met. Obviously, they employ human beings, just like we all are, so mistakes happen. The goal is to identify those mistakes, address them, provide education, and ensure that they do not happen in the future. And they maintain, obviously, ambulance rates consistent with or less than other similar EMS systems. Just a reminder, By-County Ambulance is a fee-for-service ambulance provider. They get no tax subsidy or any other funding sources. It's all based upon fee-for-services for the patients that they provide emergency ambulance services to. And more importantly, it's only the patients that actually receive transportation at the hospital, as most insurance companies don't pay unless the transportation is, is met. Their current ALS base rate, like, which like I said, is similar to or a little bit less than some other systems, is about $3,296. So that's, you know, basically what a patient will get billed, but more importantly is that next bullet point. They currently only collect about 16% on the dollar. So for every dollar that's billed to a patient because of Medicare and Medi-Cal, they're not going to pay any more regardless of the rate. When you put all those together with the commercial insurance, they only collect about 16% on the dollar of billed rates that, that's billed to the patient. And then for 2024 combined, so this is both Yuba and Sutter Counties, this area is a little bit unique in the state of California where you have one provider that provides EOA services for two adjacent counties. But that's how they kind of report their financials to us. So combined, they had an annual net income of about $300,000, which for, for a emergency ground ambulance provider with the size of By-County that covers two counties, I can tell you that, that that's not a significant amount. Obviously, I just mentioned earlier, a single ambulance is $250,000. So if something happens with one of those ambulances, they obviously need some reserve funding to continue to operate and provide the services. Unit hour costs, obviously, just like everything else, increased personnel wage and benefit costs, increased vehicle and fuel maintenance costs. We already talked about the ambulance and equipment. It's very expensive to provide these services and to ensure that their readiness is available for those patients that need 911 services. Just to wrap up, a couple slides here. I just wanted to give you a little bit of comparison because when we talk about providing an exclusive operating agreement and not going through a competitive procurement process from a public perspective, obviously, that's something that we want to do going into understanding what that means and making sure that the citizens of Yuba County are provided the best pre-hospital care at the most efficient and cost-effective services. You can see for the state of California, 48% of the 300-plus emergency ambulance zones are non-exclusive. That means anybody that meets minimum requirements could provide ambulance service to those areas. That's usually not the recommended model because, for example, if you look at Yuba County here specifically, someone could provide services to Marysville but may not want to provide services to Plumas Lake because of all, call volume is less, and so it's more expensive to provide those services. So usually, it's done on a county-wide basis to make sure that all the citizens in the county receive adequate service and that it's a sustainable model for the ambulance provider. 40% of those in the state are non-competitive exclusive operating area agreements, just like By-County here in Yuba County, and 12% in the state of California are competitive EOA. As you can see on the right side of this slide, that's pretty equivalent to our EMS region. We have about 30, I'm sorry, 27 total emergency response zones. 52% are non-exclusive, 40% are non-competitive, and 8% are competitive EOA agreements. Last slide here is just some recommendations. So due to the continual compliance with their current EOA agreement and the significant improvements that they made over the last couple of years, which are clearly sustainable at this point, we're actually recommending negotiating, recommending to negotiate a renewal EOA agreement with By-County Ambulance to continue to provide EMS services to Yuba County residents and visitors. That does exclude the Beal Air Force Base area, which has their own ambulance service. I actually previously worked as a paramedic for them for several years. So they have a single ambulance on the base that actually covers the base specifically. By-County Ambulance obviously provides backup and mutual aid services when that ambulance is not available or if there's a larger incident that has multiple patients. So again, as I mentioned earlier, these agreements are normally for a term of five years. That ensures good consistency and sustainability for the providers. And again, if the board agrees and provides direction based upon the statute for us to attempt to negotiate a renewal contract, we will start having provider-stakeholder meetings with local fire departments, law enforcement, hospitals, and other appropriate entities to get their feedback on some system improvements that they would like to see. One of the new things, obviously, that we would recommend based upon current industry standards is to introduce some additional clinical performance measures in addition to some of the response time and operational performance measures to ensure, again, that we have good clinical patient care and performance quality. So with that, I will yield and open up to any questions that the board may have.
Question, comments from the board?
Through the chair. I just want to say thank you for the recommendation to continue going forward with our current ambulance operator. They, and going back out for a five-year contract. Every, every community event that I'm at, every, every volunteer opportunity, they're, they're always there. They're engaged in the community. They do good work. They, I trust them to take my parents to the hospital, that kind of thing. So I just, I do also like that you, even though it's non-competitive, that you put those metrics on there to make sure that the care is still there as well as the timely performance. So thank you for your work.
I'll make a comment through the chair.
Yes.
If you guys haven't been on a tour of By-County Ambulance, I highly recommend it. Gary and I went. And wow, the investment that they do over there and, and what they provide is just unbelievable. So I recommend we do a five-year agreement as well.
Through the chair, too. I hope you're taking advantage of all of the bonus depreciation and tax opportunities that have been created by our federal government because it's a good time to invest in your fleet and, and all of your materials, so, yeah.
I'll just add to what's already been stated. Appreciate all the detailed information, and I know By-County did a great job overcoming the challenges they had with staffing and to see that that's sustainable, so appreciate that. I think they do an outstanding job serving our community. I'd have no problem getting a ride to the hospital or having one of my family members get a ride to the hospital from them. And as mentioned by Supervisor House, they give back and support this community as well. They're truly part of the community, and so I'm fully in support of what my fellow board members have suggested, and appreciate that that's the recommendation. So any additional board comment before we go to public comment? Okay, any public comment on this item? Oh, yes. Come on up, John.
Marysville, appreciate your identifying the corporate citizenship that By-County provides to this community. They are incredible contributors to what happens. I just wanted to point out that they play an incredibly key role during emergency service periods. You know, Orville Spillway Incident marked one of the biggest evacuations and rushes to evacuations that Northern California has ever experienced. OES has a major responsibility in that, obviously, the sheriff and, you know, all of the complement of the county forces to make things happen. It was By-County Ambulance that coordinated eight different ambulance services to move every patient that was in a convalescent home, hospital, anything where they were immobilized as far away as Santa Rosa and get back and get more people to safety during that incident was probably one of those things that we missed to take the full opportunity to really be grateful for. But it's not displayed in this presentation. It's not something that's written. But when the, when the rubber hits the road and you really need to make something happen, they are an incredible partner to this community, and, and they've proved it over and over. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we're actually going to go back to item 531, because evidently I skipped it. Administrative Services, Approve Professional Services Agreement with United Building Contractors Incorporated for the Yuba County Library renovation project tween room. So, morning, Promender. Sorry about that.
It's fine. Maybe I get to skip it now.
No, no, we want to approve it. It's good stuff.
Promender Baines with Administrative Services. I'm here to recommend that the board award the contract to United Building Contractors for $1,080,000 for the library renovation tween room project. I call it the Phase Two project. To provide a little background, we received a building, the building for renovation or infrastructure grant program, and we received $6 million from that for critical maintenance and life safety improvements. We ended up going out to bid, and we awarded a contract with United Building Contracts for approximately 3.3 million. And that was under our estimate. Our estimate was actually higher. So we went out to bid again for an additional improvements, and we received five bids, and United Building Contractors came in at $1,080,000 for Phase Two, the tween room project. It's converting the bus garage into a tween room, replacing the HVAC unit and replacing the windows. And it's, the items are long-needed items, and we want to get this contract executed fairly quickly so we can start ordering the materials and get the project going because we have until April 2026 to complete the project. I'm here to answer any questions or if you have any comments.
Questions or comments from board members?
Through the chair. Just have a question on the, since this is the side that faces Third Street. Is it going to maintain a roll-up doors? Are there going to be some outdoors areas? Are there going to be some windows to kind of help revitalize that street?
I, I believe there's going to be some windows there.
Okay, and just, because that's one of those target zones where they're trying to have, you know, there's ice cream shops, butcher shop, restaurants, things moving in, and we don't want to just be the cinder block building that looks like AT&amp;T's communication center, so.
Yeah, because I do know that we do need to fill in because there's a ramp that goes down for the bus garage. We have to fill that in. We're tearing some walls down, but I believe we are putting a window there.
If we could just do what we can to keep that in there, the contractors' mind, too. I know you've already got the plans and everything else, but.
Correct. We can look at a changeover if not, so.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments? Okay, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
O to approve.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Thank you, Promender. Next up is item 546 2025, County Administrator, Approve Letter of Opposition on Proposition 50 to California Governor Gavin Newsom. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, actually, this, this was at the request of Supervisor Messick, so I'll just let the board discuss whether or not you want to move forward with this letter.
I had several constituents call and ask to do this, and I, I think it's important to us. I think Proposition 50 takes power from the people, the appointed citizens that do the districting and puts it in the hands of politicians, and I don't trust politicians.
Especially Newsom.
Any other comments on it?
Through the chair. Yeah, for, for me, too, it's the same, the, the fact that we had a statewide policy that was created to create a board to make these kind of recommendations so we don't go with the political waves, and now we're in a political wave, so they're trying to do a switch on us. I think it's super imperative that we sign this letter of opposition. I don't think it has enough teeth, but it's very nice that it's, that it's, it's worded to go against Proposition 50. So thank you, guys, for coming up with this. I drafted one, too, but mine was a lot worse. And if I gave it to you, you'd probably just throw it away, say we couldn't do it. But very classy, and that is a motion. I'd like to move to approve that we sign this letter of opposition to Proposition 50.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I, I do have some, some board comments on this. I do agree with a lot of what my fellow board members have said. I also agree with what a lot of the letter says, but I, but I do have some, some additional comments. So Prop 50 asks California voters to approve a gerrymandered congressional map that favors Democrats in response to gerrymandered maps elsewhere in the country that favor Republicans. Just as those other maps disenfranchise Democrats in red states, this one disenfranchises Republicans here in Yuba County and elsewhere in California. As the letter before us notes, no state should be doing mid-decade redistricting for political purposes, and I strongly believe all states should use an independent redistricting commission like California does. Unfortunately, that's not the reality across the country, though it should be. It's why I support legislation by Congressman Hiley and Senator Padilla to ban mid-decade redistricting nationwide and require all states to adopt independent commissions. That said, I don't believe Proposition 50, whether it passes or fails, will have any meaning. meaningful impact on Yuba County government or our ability to serve our residents. Typically, but not always, our board only takes positions on legislation or ballot measures that directly affect county operations or local governments. In my opinion, Prop 50 does not do that. If I represented Modoc or Siskiyou County, I would likely feel differently as I don't believe Modoc and Marin share a true community of interest. However, putting aside partisanship, we must ask, do we have more in common with Redding, Redbluff and Wyrica or Lincoln, Rio Linda and Woodland? More in common with Yolo County or Modoc County? Given that Prop 50 has no direct impact, positive or negative, on Yuba County's ability to serve its people and given that our proposed district is not unreasonable in terms of shared interests, I don't believe this nonpartisan board should take a formal position on such a clearly partisan proposition. For that reason, I will be abstaining from this vote. So I don't know if there's any public comment on this item?
Yes, through the chair, we did receive an email from Mr. Rich Seber urging the board to sign the letter in opposition of Prop 50.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom? Oh, looks like.
I'm here to oppose. Against Prop 50. Prop 50 don't benefit Yuba County, don't benefit Sacramento, don't benefit me, don't benefit anybody in the Sacramento region. I'm against Prop 50. I'm against it as a fellow Sacramento person, Yuba County person, Sacramento person, doesn't benefit the North States and Sacramento region, doesn't benefit. So I'm against Prop 50. It's all bipartisan, partisan politic, which is bad. The government, you are nonpartisan, like the official, not partisan, you're nonpartisan. So I'm against Prop 50 to benefit, benefit Sacramento. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? I'm abstaining. So, okay. With that, we will move on to ordinances and public hearings. Will you please read, Ezzie, the, the paragraph there?
If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Great, thank you. And we have one item under ordinances and public hearings and that is Community Development and Services ordinance, hold public hearing, waive first reading and introduce ordinance amending section 10.05.140 of chapter 10.05 of the Yuba County Ordinance Code relating to building standards and construction. Morning.
Here, members of the board. I'm Dave Maddox, Chief Building Official. The item before you today is the ordinance amending chapter 10.05 of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. This amendment is required to adopt the new 2025 California Building Code, which will replace our current 2022 code and become effective January 1st, 2026. Every three years, the State Building Standards Commission updates construction standards that are codified in Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. Local jurisdictions then adopt those standards to ensure consistency across the state. This is a routine update that we carry out every three years. It simply updates our county code references to align with the new 2025 code. So with that, I recommend the board waive first reading and introduce the ordinance amending section 10.05.140 of chapter 10.05 of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair. Any surprises in there that are going to cost, raise the cost of housing?
At the moment, no. We, we just received the code probably four or five weeks ago. We're still going through it. Training for the new code happens unfortunately after January, so, but no, as I've, as I've been paying attention to local agencies, there's, there's nothing, nothing of substance to be worried about.
That's just they always tell us. Okay. Thank you. Through the chair.
Yes.
Dave, is there going to be any community engagement for, or any type of website we're going to put up with the new building code where the community can understand it?
Well, the code is available online and we, we did put out a press release that just says, hey, the new code's coming. It's on our website. It's at the public counter. That's the extent of it.
Okay. I did appreciate a couple of years back when we had that residential construction guide. I keep telling these guys, so if we get a new code update, it might be helpful if there's anything that the community could benefit from helping streamline permits and decision-making. I hate when people get into a construction project, especially when it's a person who owns a piece of property who just wants to build something and they, they've been priced out of their own project because of some, something they didn't know about, so.
Understood. Yeah, and we will update those, those guidelines if, if needed.
All right. Any public comment on this item? I guess, yeah, no public comment? Okay. With that is our motion.
We'll bring it back and move to approve.
I'll second. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fear?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Next up is correspondents. It's as listed on the agenda and then we'll move to board and staff member reports. Supervisor Vasquez?
Last Monday, went to FracMed. I think I'll let Mr. House expand on that. A very interesting meeting. Friday, 10:10, went to the Area Four meeting. 10:11, attended the Marysville High School Recognition Dinner at the Elks Lodge. And let's see. Monday, went to the South County Regional Wastewater Project Meeting at Opud. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was our house. As Supervisor Vasquez referenced, last week we had the Feather River Air Quality Management District Meeting. I'm the chairperson for that. There's just, there's some amazing grants available to our county. Blue Sky Grants help, help farmers and businesses and government agencies replace equipment. So I hope our, our grants teams are looking at all those. They close very soon, I think October 17th. I think we could have some innovative ideas around transportation in our community if we had some people that really wanted to spearhead some other modes of transportation other than the buses or the cars, if they wanted to do a scooter project or anything else, those, those are, those kinds of funds are available. They do come at a cost. I mean, we get the funds as a, as a portion of a tax from like cap and trade and some other air quality district permit fees that get funneled back to our area. So it's important that we use the funding so that other people don't benefit from the taxes they're collecting from our farmers and from our generators of, of air quality district regulated materials. But it's just super important. And then I did ask them about the, the burn notices, or not the burn notices, the, they announce that each day at 9:30 a.m. if it's a burn day or not. I get a lot of constituents that want to burn at 6 a.m. and I got educated on it a little bit. California believes that if you burn when the dupe, at the dew point or closer to the dew point, the, the smoke and residual chemicals stay low and you have to breathe it in, your neighbors have to breathe it in. If it's warmer throughout the day, 9:30 a.m. or later on average, but before 3:00, those chemicals and everything else tend to go up into the atmosphere and disperse so that they're not high pollutant levels. So that's the reason for the 9:30 timeframe that they set and there's no, no way around it. It's a state law, so. But last week or since last meeting, I went to the, the Farm to Fork Dinner, which was pretty great. We had people from all over the north part of the state and some from different countries came in and enjoyed some of our local Mong cuisine prepared by a world-renowned chef. We had the 4-H kids out there bussing tables and, and showing support to their Farm Bureau members who also support them, so it's all a big circle. Then last weekend, I barbecued at the homecoming for the Marysville Junior Indians. Their, most of their teams are 8-0. We're going to Sutter this weekend to whip them up. So if you want to come out and join us watching some little guys play tackle football, that'd be great. But lots of other meetings. Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting was last Thursday. Lots going on in our community to, to help those in need. The problem is, is since Prop 1 passed, those, a lot of our efforts on prevention have been eliminated and so now we're stuck with treating the aftermath and policing and sheriffs and things like that that aren't really funded well. I mean, they are funded well, but they're not funded well when it comes to behavioral health, any, any, any monies from that. So just try to keep that on your radar. If, if there's anything we could do to coordinate partnerships with prevention services for behavioral health, I just wanted to give a kudos to our probation and Sheriff's Department for putting on a Friday night event for kids out in Oliverston Linda at Yuba Garden School. They had 400 kids came out to play basketball, eat out of the food trucks and, and just have a night where they could be kids, no gangs, no problems. Strong presence from House of Unity, which is Randy Mitchell and our probation department and our sheriff and just a great evening. So, and they're going to be doing that once a month, so I think that's enough.
Okay. Supervisor Fear?
Just some thoughts on the Habitat for Humanity project. I recently had a presentation by Mr. Perkins on the value of tourism and how it can bring funds into a community. And that particular project that they're going to be doing similarly to what we sponsored through the Farm to Fork Dinner and the Bishop's Pumpkin Farm to bring tourism and revenue into our county, we're going to be getting a double dose through the Habitat project in that we're going to be rehabilitating the Pine Street neighborhood. So we're getting an actual direct advantage there. Plus, we're bringing people here who are going to be spending money. So it's just a, a double win and it would be nice to see us do as much for them as we did for those other projects.
All right, I guess I'm up.
You're up.
Welcome back, Mr. Perkins. I had a really nice vacation during walnut harvest following your wife's Facebook post, so it looks like you guys had a great trip. I want to let you guys know, I went to the Be Prepared Fair. OES did a great job and Sheriff's Department, everybody was out there. I took my grandchildren, they had a blast. So it was a really great event that the county puts on and sponsors. I also went to the Farm and Fork Dinner in downtown Marysville and I got to tell you, my triplet boys just turned 18 last week and I wish I would have seen this when they were real little because they just put the food in the middle of the table and you served yourself. And I'm thinking, that would have been a much easier way to raise triplets, just throw the food in the middle of the table and let everybody fend for themselves. But it was a great dinner, well-represented, the local community and also made it to Hogs and Hulas that night. So I think that's about it. Harvest is going well. Got a little rain break.
Awesome. Now, okay, Council?
Thank you.
Kevin?
Just a couple of quick things, in case the board members aren't aware. Former Supervisor Bill Simmons passed away recently. I'd, I'd recommend the board adjourn in memory of Bill.
Yes.
Yes. And then as far as upcoming things, so the next board meeting, I plan to present both the board discretionary fund policy. If the board recalls, that was the policy that we were working on as a result of the August budget workshop. The recommendation will be that we budget $50,000 for this fiscal year, $10,000 per district and then the policy will outline how the board members can expend those funds within their district. And then also a sponsorship policy that the board recommended after we had our discussion previously actually about the pumpkin sponsorship and the Farm to Fork Dinner. So, and we have our employee appreciation barbecue planned for this Thursday. Fingers crossed that Mother Nature doesn't spoil it, but right now we're, we're planning to have it and to proceed. So that's all I've got.
Great. Thank you. There's a few items, community events coming up in the south part of the county. The Plumas Lake Halloween Parade is this Saturday evening and the Plumas Lake Trunk or Treat and Harvest Festival at Rio del Oro will be the following week on 10/24 on Friday night. And then the Plumas Lake Community Cleanup is going to be on Saturday, the 25th, so I appreciate Recology and Public Works support and participation in that. And then over in Wheatland, they have a safe trick or treat that is going to be happening on Halloween afternoon and then also the day after Halloween on Saturday, the 1st, the Wild West Saloon fundraiser will be happening. So that's what's going on in the south part of the county. So next up is closed session. We will enter closed session at 10:55.
Chair, I forgot one item. I'll be out of town the 21st to 24th at Calafco.
Okay. And, and after closed session, there is one more county department item that we will be considering. Before we go into closed session, I will just take, is there any public comment on any closed session items or the county department item? You're welcome to provide that public comment at this time.
Excuse me, Chairman, I also have one small correction to one closed item description. 529 should read at the end instead of citations numbers one through nine, citation one, items one through six and two through nine.
Okay.
Also, could I add one thing to my comment?
Yes.
About the gentleman that keeps coming and complaining about the airport. I just want to commend Jason Coppin and Kimberly, they're doing an excellent job working with the FAA. This is 100% caused by the FAA. One branch says this and the other branch says that. And I just looked up Franklin Field, it said they don't have an ILS approach, they're not Echo airspace, not even comparable to Yuba County Airport. We have an ILS approach or an Echo airspace and these guys are going way above and beyond to find a resolution to this issue and it's not caused by Yuba County.
Thank you for, for those comments. I think it is important that the public hear that so they understand that we're working hard to, to get that taken care of, so. Okay, so with that, we will recess until 10:55 for closed session.
Thank you.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Sutter, and Nevada Counties.